Good afternoon, good evening. It's time to call the meeting to order. Please stand and, um, I guess we'll have Mr. Andrews lead us in the plaid divisions. Rich?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Carrick?
All through with divine providence, with confidence we offer our prayer to you as we begin our meeting to do the business of our city. May we always remember and appreciate the gifts you have so generously given to all: life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Give us the strength and wisdom to work humbly, act justly, and know you are always with us. In our prayers always, we commend our servicemen, women, and their families that they may remain safe and return home soon. With our nation's Memorial Day only a week past, we remember all those who gave their lives for others, the greatest gift of love in the face of great evil. We ask God to accept their great sacrifice and help us always to remember that sacrifice. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Will the clerk please call her own?
Curran?
Here.
Hadad? Matt?
Present.
Levy?
Present.
Seaberry?
Present.
Harley?
Here.
Taylor? Cola?
Here.
Negashet?
Present.
Halles?
Present.
Cabo?
Present.
Sadi? Visconti?
Here.
Palmer? Wetmore?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Genies?
Present.
Nutella?
Here.
Skazafaba? And Tysholz?
There being 16 present and five absent, let me record reflect the following: Mr. Hadad is out of town with a baseball team. Mr. Taylor is not feeling well this evening. Mr. Halles is at a family event. Mr. Sadi is at another event. He should be here in the next 15 minutes or so. Mr. Palmer was called out of town this evening for an important business meeting. Um, that should be it. There would be 16 present and five absent. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting reserve for public speaking. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, you may do so. However, you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the City of Danbury, and you must address the council about a specific item that is listed on the agenda tonight. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council this evening? Any member of the public that wishes to address Mrs. Wall?
I'm in Wall Street, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, in my passport. Anyway, I came to address item number four, the Harrington Woods property. I was really surprised to see how many people live in the house. There aren't any houses that you can rent in Danbury that cost $1,000 a month. I know I'm saying just, but for the most part, we're going to look into, I mean, the real property so that sort of thing, and most houses are at least 15 on a higher accord. So I just wanted to say that, that it's a little more than I would consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall. Appreciate your input and service. Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none then, we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. I have several announcements tonight. First and foremost, here's some very good news. Billy Tysholz will be home tomorrow from his service to our country. It's a happy day at the Tysholz house and a happy day in the City of Danbury. So I've been able to stay and touch myself with Billy by Facebook, and we're just really proud of him and his service to our great country. So I pass it along to him.
Thank you.
Bring him by when you get a minute. Get settled like you see. June 18th is City Councilman Ben Genies' birthday. Congratulations, officer. There are also a bunch of other activities, items, that are on your agenda. Just going to try to hit the highlights. The Lebanon American Club Scholarship Dinner is at the Amber Room Thursday evening, 6 to 9. You can talk to Tom Sadi about the details with that. The Westerners Breakfast is the next morning at the Amber Colonnade. I think the speaker is, of course, my favorite team, the New York Mets, ex-Metron D'Arling. So he'll be here to share his insight into Mets baseball. In addition to that, on Saturday, we have the Social Media Fair on the Green. It's $10. And it's also the Maker Fair. So it's a combination of both. There'll be a whole bunch of interesting workshops and things that are going on that day. I want to thank Bruce for pulling this together. We're anticipating a resizable crowd. We were having an event on Friday night, but we are expecting inclement weather on the Green. So we're going to not have the event Friday night. There's going to be a kind of a mixer, if you will, underneath the tent, but we may not erect the tent until early morning because the storm is coming in. So that has been postponed. We'll try to reboot that next year. June 9th is a great, if you want to see something really interesting, the Danbury Fire and Police Fishing Derby is at Canosa Park. A lot of fun, a lot of kids that are participating in that, as well as the Greater Danbury Soapbox Derby that is also, as I said, on Castor Street, which is going to roll around nice and clean and ready for the kids. Also, in addition to that, June 15th, we pulled together a Candlewood Lake Cleanup. It's taking place in Fairfield, but all the CEOs of the five surrounding communities of the lake are participating. Love to have you stop out. It's really for cleaning up around the lake. People bring their boats to Cottonwood Cove Marina in Fairfield where they can throw items out free of charge that they collect, you know, on the lake. It's not so you can have to have your basement, put on your boat, and drive it over. We'll also have hot dogs, hamburgers, and just kind of as a thank you for being out there. All donated by Winters Brothers and a couple other folks that have helped put some money together. On the 15th, in the evening, the afternoon, is the House Lodge Flag Day Ceremony. I've kind of been a long wolf there, so if anybody wants to show up, that would be really appreciated. It's only about half an hour. Celebrates our flag. And in the evening is the Portuguese Scholarship Dinner. 16th is Father's Day. And of course, June 19th, I caution everybody to stay away from Danbury High School. It's graduation night, and we're graduating about 700 kids, which means you're going to have about 1,500 to 2,000 parents, grandparents, and happy relatives. So the traffic is usually a challenge. The 21st is the Greater Danbury Chamber of Leaders Luncheon, and there's a bunch of graduations from middle schools on that day. We are having the Lebanon American Flag Raising on the 23rd at noon here at City Hall. And of course, the City Center Farmer's Market opening is at Kennedy Park on June 28th. And then the fireworks, or traditional annual fireworks, on the 29th of this month for the Fourth of July weekend. That is by no means all the events that are occurring in the city. It's very busy this month, as you can see, and it's some of them. We also have some sad news to pass along to you. Many of you know Denny Janney, who is our civil service director and our chief examiner. Her husband passed last week. There is a ceremony that'll be a remembered ceremony, celebration of life, on June the 9th. You can contact Jenny Losco Warner as the resources director, and she can give you the details. If you wish to attend, I think that's at Hatters Park on the 9th. So we extend our deepest sympathy and condolences to Denny and her family who are going through a very difficult time, as we speak. Other than that, today has been somewhat unbearable. If you could bear with me this evening? All right, let's move on. Mr. President, can we have a minute, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we waive the reading of the minutes. As members, you have copies of the legislative assistance office.
Motion made second by Mr. Negashet. Are there any corrections, deletions, or changes to the minutes as presented? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on acceptance. If you favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, may we have the consent calendar?
You certainly made a consent calendar for June 4, 2013. Read as follows. Number three, received communication from the existing Director of Finance, Dan Garrett, and approved the appropriation of $83,800 to the ambulance fund for additional costs related to vehicle use and maintenance, as well as upgrades to the mobile data terminals and related emergency medical software. Number four, received communication, approved a proposal, proposed residential lease for the Chow House in Harrington Woods, as requested by Superintendent of Public Buildings, Richard Collins. Number seven, received communication, adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Education for the City of Danbury's youth service operations. This funding now exceeds $70,000 per year for the two-year contract starting July 1, 2013, ending June 30, 2015. Number eight, received communication, adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Department of Health and Human Services to accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. The allocation in the amount of $96,371.78 for the period from July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014 will be used for criminal programs within the department. No local match is required. Number nine, received communication, adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Department of Health and Human Services to accept an amendment to the city emergency shelter funds from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. Current funding of October 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013 will be increased from $90,277 to $90,860. It will be extended one year to June 30, 2014, as allocation become available from the state. Number 10, received communication, adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Department of Health and Human Services to accept additional funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the existing preventative health block skin cancer awareness contract. The increase in the funding total in $4,208 expires June 30, 2014. Again, no local match is required. Number 11, received communication, adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden for his designation to execute agreement for the conduct of a test pit and related work on Route 37 and Stacy Road, and set agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation. The total reimbursement of the test pit and the cost is estimated at $89,655.48. Number 12, received communication from the Ad-Hoc Committee, adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden to sign the Charter of Compassion as recommended by the committee. Number 13, received report and recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Committee to ratify and renew proposed contract with ambulance and advanced support services between the City of Danbury and Western Connecticut Health Network from July 1, 2013, June 30, 2018, with an option to renew for five years commencing July 1, 2018, should both parties agree. With that, Mr. Mayor, is the consent calendar for June 4th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Napp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to exempt the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. She made a second about Mr. Wetmore. Any discussion related to the consent calendar? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, signify by saying nay. Aye. The motion carries unanimously. To our City of Compassion folks, congratulations. Appreciate all of WestCon's hard work on this, and we'll work together to help formulate our plans and move forward, and just appreciate you being here. You're welcome to stay and hang out if you really want to see City government action, but if you leave, we won't be heard either, so.
We're taking double twist rolls.
There you go. Take it over.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Burke.
Your Honor, it's on the City Council. During the past few months, I have had conversations with our unified neighborhood inspection team and the Main Street partnership about the possibility of establishing a 10 a.m. opening for liquor stores within our downtown revitalization building. I'm requesting a designated Ad-Hoc Committee to examine this possibility and potentially adopting a corresponding ordinance. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Burke. I want to record reflect that Mr. Sadi has entered the chambers. What's your pleasure, Council on this? Councilman Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc with a representative from the mayor's office, representative from the unit, as well as Corporation Council, Chairperson of the City Center, Director of Planning, and the Director of...
Ad-Hoc Committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Napp in the chair, Councilman Tysholz, and Councilman Perkins. I'm to Madam Burke.
To Mayor Mark Bowden from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance. As you are aware from the recent budget process, the city and the Board of Education have been committed to working together to find the most cost-effective solution in dealing with the significant annual rate increases in providing health insurance for our employees. Mayor Bowden's directive was to propose a solution to this costly growing problem that would consider the unique plan provisions of both the city and the Board of Education while minimizing the impact of tax pay. The city's finance team worked very closely over the last several months with Board of Education Finance Director Joe Martino and his team to explore all the options available. The simplest answer offered the best overall long-term solution to the City of Danbury tax pay. Combine the plans to spread the risks over a larger pool to reduce our premium costs and to minimize the reserve requirement for a self-insured plan. Our current health provider, Cigna, was selected after careful consideration of the proposals from the three major healthcare providers, Cigna, Aetna, and Apple. Please keep in mind that this change is significant but necessary for long-term savings in healthcare costs. One of the most significant changes in moving from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan is a requirement to establish and to fund a self-insurance reserve to cover the claims margin. The first year amount for both the Board of Education and the city is expected to be about $2,200,000 or 7% of claims. This amount will need to increase over the next few fiscal years until it amounts to about 20 to 25% of claims. Please consider establishing the following reserve account for self-insurance so we can allocate surplus funds as necessary and when available. 014-24002690, Reserve for Health Insurance. I appreciate your consideration of this matter. Call me if you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Burke. I didn't mention earlier about Mr. St. Hilaire would be here, but he had a accident over the Memorial Day weekend, so he's going to be laid up for a couple of weeks. Not a car accident, he'll survive, but just trying to watch this streaming online, so I didn't want to totally talk about your health condition, but that's why he's not here. So no disrespect to the council. Anyways, what's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Napp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to motion to receive the communication and adopt the proposal, Mayor Mark Bowden, to establish a self-insurance reserve for both the Board of Education and city employees' health insurance program, with only $2,200,000 or 7% to be used to cover the anticipated claims margin.
Second? Motion made seconded by Councilman Negashet. Let's start with discussion under this title. Mr. Garrett is here, then can you answer any questions as well? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, do Dan come in? Dan, could you just really give us an overview of what exactly this is going to be doing for the people that will be involved? How's it going to work? Also, I have a follow-up question to you.
Okay. This does not change, seeing all of this does not change any claims under the tax pay right now. This is changing the funding method. So the city takes on the liability of the claims. We're not paying it anymore than Cigna would pay for administration of the plan. But again, it's the same plan. So what we're looking here for is authorization to open a reserve account. And what that does is we have anticipated claims for the year, and then on top of that, we can purchase an aggregate stop loss, so that worst-case scenario, that aggregate stop loss will take in. But the difference between those anticipated claims and aggregate stop losses is 25% of the anticipated claims. The difference of that is what we're trying to build up the reserve. So again, you know, worst-case scenario, we have funds to pay for those additional claims.
Sure. Thank you, Dan. Where would the unions and retirees, folks like that, where are they going to fit in with this situation?
Their benefits would continue just as they are now. Again, it's us paying Cigna to administer those claims instead of paying a premium to Cigna. So no benefits changed for either active employees or retired employees. Same exact plan, same benefits. It's just that we're at a cash flow. Basically, that's what we're describing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotell.
Thanks. Through the chair to Dan. All right. What, five, 10 years around, what level of funds would you like to have to cover this?
Well, what we want to do is aggregate stop loss is 125% of anticipated claims. So what we want to do is build that reserve up to 25% of anticipated claims.
Which would be how much?
Well, at this point, it would be $7 million. And we're looking at 2.2 for next year. We probably build that up over a three-year period.
Those are both sides, city and board of that?
And the way we're doing that is we're funding it to the fully insured quote that we got from Cigna. So it's not any higher than what fully insured would be. And if the claims are less, we can use those funds to fill that reserve even more, or we can use that to reduce the future years' expenses.
Well, if I can sort of continue the conversation, you know, one of the reasons people get insurance is to spread the risk, and now we're spreading the risk to the taxpayers. And I just want to let you know that I've been a proponent of self-insurance for years, and if I'm not advocating, I'm at least asking, is this the year we're going to do it? So I'm happy to see that we're progressing on this. But I think that one thing we should consider going forward is to put the safety of the taxpayers at the head of the line. It would be great if we had a nice little pile that we weren't spending, and we could reduce co-pays and do things like that. But the day may come when we get an A.O. in a couple of years, and we will have wished that we hung on to that surplus. So I would like to see us get at least that 125, if not a little bit more, so that we can maybe even think about reducing the payments to the insurance companies, so that we really could start saving some money. And also do with the insurance companies, which is to reinvest these funds and, you know, the work for us. But I'm certainly in favor of this, Dan.
Mr. Don, further discussion? Mr. Genies?
Thank you, Your Honor. The booth's through the chair. Just as I understand, apparently the only thing we're really doing, we're just establishing a line item on budget for this account. Are we transferring actual funds into this account currently? Or just establishing the fund?
Now, if we have a positive year this year, we'll transfer funds into that account. If not, it will happen, you know, next fiscal year. But that'll give us some flexibility to start building that up.
So in other words, if we run a surplus at the end of the year by June 30, June, which we might have until August, whatever we have left over, we're going to put in this account. And then the savings that we receive between self-insuring and going fully insured, that delta will be put in here as well. And we budget it to the fully insured number, so we would have a little bit of room there to start creating this reserve fund. What's the benefit of this? The benefit is you're not going to be subject to 25 to 28% increases every year. Right now, we're at one of the few cities that doesn't self-insure, and we really got to get off this merry-go-round. So the idea here is to minimize our risk. We have a stop loss where anybody gets catastrophically sick, and on top of that, you can look towards more reasonable increases that are manageable. And that's kind of why we're doing it. But you're spot on, Mr. Don.
So just understand, so we started at zero, and by June 30th, 14, we're going to have some power.
Right. Yeah, our goal is to at least be at the 2.2 million level of reserve.
Further questions? Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Dan. Excuse me. Let's just say that we do get the reserve to a level that we feel comfortable with. You said maybe three, four, five years or so. Are there kind of a set of metrics that we can look at, data-wise, to see if this thing is actually effective in saving costs? I think the mayor may have mentioned one, about 20%, but can you give me like a few more, maybe possible line items that you would be looking at to see if this whole program is effective?
Sure. We have hired a outside consultant that helps us. Every year, when we go to review with our current carrier, we go out and get quotes, you know, from those three vital carriers in this area. They look down and they sit down and look at our claims, and that's the one thing that we use that we, unless they write down our original quotes that we have to, for example, we've got a 25% increase. They sat down, looked at it, and said, no, your increase really be 80%. So after months of negotiating with them, we got down to 80%. You know, they tell by the amount of claims, the type of claims, and that sort of thing without, you know, looking at any, you know, by like a hit that. But they give us a really good sense of what is making the most sense. And the great thing about this is this allows to reduce some of future increases.
Thank you. Follow-up. Is there any way that we can maybe get some kind of update or something to see how all this thing's working?
Thank you. And you will see in next year's budget, too. And just so the council's aware, I answered a really to Mr. Perkins's question, but in general, here, our pricing is driven by claim history. The better claim history we have, the lower insurance rate, even in self-funding options. So one of the things we also got to work on, and we've been talking about, is, you know, working on wellness programs, education of our employees to avoid injuries, and when they do get injured, to be proactive in the mental care versus waiting till it becomes catastrophic. Further discussion? Further discussion? Mr. Levy?
Let me think if I understand this, if I may, through the chair. You know, when my house insurance went up too high, I had an increase deductible on it so I could get the premium down. Is that essentially what we're doing here, is we're taking on some of the risk so that we can keep our premium down?
It's not quite like that. I guess you could look at the stop loss that way. You know, there is a difference. Okay, we anticipate, say, $10 million for the claims. So the 25%, you could go up to $12,000, $12,000, $12,000, and if the stop loss picks in it. So you can look at that as your deductible. But this is really, we're paying, we're paying a carrier to administrate the plan. Right now, they're keeping about, well, I shouldn't say they're keeping. It's costing us about 20% for administering the plan now. If you look at current claims, this reduces to about 10%. So it's really the administration of the plan that you're saving.
And if I may, in the past, have we always covered on the insurance every first dollar coverage, or has the city absorbed some kind of deductible?
Well, we paid a premium, and therefore the claims were paid. The whole liability is left in the carrier, where we would be taking, now we would be taking on that liability.
And will be administered, or the insurance company?
We'll continue to have Cigna administrate the plan, but because we're taking on the liability, they're reducing the cost to administer your plan.
Thank you.
Any further discussion about this? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. In the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Items three and four, I consent, Madam Burke, on the five.
Communication donation to the Still River Alliance. Dear Mayor, honourable members of the Danbury City Council, as you know, the Health Department's Greenway Consultant, Jack Aljoski, has been working with Still River Alliance to recruit Still River stewards to adopt a section of the Greenway, subsidize a needed function for sustaining the Greenway, which provides... for sustaining the Greenway, or to provide a donation. We have recently made a presentation to the Kinchuck Corporation where we requested their assistance in removing tree blockages and debris that accumulated behind these garbage dams on the Greenway. Kinchuck was gracious enough to offer a $3,500 donation with a sustainability function to keep the river navigable and to remove the eyesore of accumulated garbage behind these blockages. Therefore, I respectfully request the city council adopt this, accept this donation of $3,500 for the Kinchuck Corporation. Sincerely, Scott LeRoy, Director of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Minister Rettoman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to receive the communication and accept a generous donation and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second. Motion made seconded. Discussion under the title. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, I'm ready to Scott. Scott, could you give us some information where about this work will be done in this area?
It's in the college park area in the around Kinchuck. They want to promote the use of Greenway, and our board is enjoying it, and there are areas from storms to be improved. Still River Alliance wants to relieve the eyesore and, well, funding the issues as well, so we'll be proactive and support Still River Alliance, so they did that in terms of donation , noting that we do work.
Follow-up.
Please follow.
Kinchuck is located where in the north part?
I'm going. I remember he's right across, he's right across from the, uh...
Engine 24.
Yeah, yeah, right before.
So, that blockage is behind Engine 24 is...
Well, the Greenway goes behind the building.
Right.
And, you know, if we can include an area of different songs, loud, we will, we tend to expand it. If we can use it all, and we want to make them happy because they're good parts of the stuff, we'll try to order them a way anyway, use the app more. As well as Still River Alliance, there's a lot of use.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Mr. Lorrick. There's a catchy little phrase in here, sustainability function to keep the river navigable. Apparently, that means more than one-shot deal. How many, how long can we expect this to go on?
The, you're going to see those words in our letters of support and donations because the state would grant that we have the Trail to the Olympics and the Trail Green requires that we get letters of support to show that the ancestors want this work to be continued after the plan is over. So, donations, proof of aid, support for work, and the letters are actually deliverable for the plan. So, all the words to get out.
Follow-up. Yep. I don't think I heard how long they're going to...
Well, I believe the Still River Alliance has been creating since before I made that name intended for a while, and I think that the account has been created at the same year, and so they intend to do that. And if you'd like to make a little bit of a check.
Well, I mean, I thought you would say like one year, two year, whatever.
It's been, it's been here.
Just this funding here.
Well, the funding, the funding will be used this year, whereas we want it, get it done before the next, so...
Thank you.
But the concept is to keep it going. Sorry, I didn't understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Further discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll draw your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I have a lead six, please.
Resolution, the naming of the Armed Forces Reserve Center. Dear City Council members, as you know, the new Armed Forces Reserve Center is under construction on Worcester Heights Road in Danbury. The center is not only an important element of the recent realigning and strengthening of our national defense system, but is a value in addition to our community. In conjunction with construction of the center, the 99th Regional Support Command is in the process of accepting recommendations for the naming of the center. As such, we submit for your consideration the attached resolution supporting the naming of the center as the Veterans Memorial Armed Forces Reserve Center. This name has the support of Danbury's 411th Civil Affairs Battalion, Mayor Mark Battling, and the Danbury Council of Veterans, and is a name which recognizes the contribution of all veterans of every branch of the military through our nation's history. We hope that you will support this resolution, and please feel free to contact us with any questions. Truly, Joseph Cabo, President, Danbury City Council, Tom DeSadi, Minority Leader for Danbury City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel, on this item? Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. The move to accept that presents a resolution supporting the naming of the soon-to-be-constructed Armed Forces Reserve Center in Danbury as a Veterans Memorial Armed Forces Reserve Center.
Second. Motion made seconded by Mr. Sadi. Any discussion? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I first want to thank President Cabo for not only his support, but putting forward a joint request for this resolution. As the letter states, with the Armed Forces Reserve Center moving along, the 99th Regional Support Command will be reviewing the proposed names. And while the 99th will be the ultimate authority, by virtue of that, the Army will be the ultimate authority as to what the Armed Forces Reserve Center is named, they will consider recommendations through the 411th Civil Affairs Battalion. And while there is not a formal process by which local entities like city council, Veterans Council, et cetera, submit their recommendations, those recommendations can go forward to the 99th with the 411th's package and their recommendation. That chain of command will make the ultimate decision, but we think that, and discussing this with many members of our community, yourself, Your Honor, and President Cabo and others, that this name, Veterans Memorial Armed Forces Reserve Center, does exactly what it purports to do, is honor all veterans. And some people have concerns. Discuss that with myself, with yourself, Your Honor, members of this council. Why don't we name it after a particular individual? Why not possibly General Worcester or Lee Hartel or others? Those are all considered. And in discussing this with liaisons of the Army, the feeling was that they wanted something that would honor current service members, those killed in OEF and OIF, and also that other installations, other facilities, had already been named after these individuals, such as Lee Hartel and others. So, that being said, it seemed that this was not only an appropriate name, but an excellent one, as the communication says, encompassing all our veterans and memorializing those from all wars and all branches. The length of the name may seem cumbersome, but it does, my understanding is, the Armed Forces Reserve Center does need to be part of the name because it will be a joint center. And with regard to the process, and there may be a concern of naming it after something besides an individual. I've done some additional research, and there are installations not only named after regions. There's one named after Bluegrass in Kentucky, and there actually also is a recommendation in the Army regulation which considers the naming of a center with either a temporary name or quite possibly a name, I'm going to exhibit, but apologize. There's one example given as Southern Maryland Memorial U.S. Armed Forces Reserve Center. So, I think that this will withstand muster, but in the end, it will be the Army, but we hope that they'll consider this name. I thank you for that, and I hope my colleagues will support this.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Any other discussions related to the Armed Forces Reserve Center? As long as it's not the Newtown Reserve Center, which is still technically the name of this facility, it's a step forward for us, but other discussion? Yes, Mr. Cabo.
Your Honor, thank you. I would like to thank Councilman Sadi and you and your office and the members of leadership of this council for the work that was done to put this name forward, and I know probably, like most reserve centers, this will probably be referred to by most people as the Danbury Reserve Center, but it's right in fitting, I think, that we suggest the name be better memorial and thank everybody for their help and their involvement on this, and just hope that we have a good outcome of that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other discussion related to the Reserve Center? Seeing none, then I'll draw your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven through 13 were consent. Mr. President, department reports, please.
Your Honor, I motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports as all members have copies and copies are on file in the city for systems office review.
Second. Motion made seconded by Mr. Neigash. Discussion under department reports. Discussion. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just got an email today that these booklets that we get at our council meetings are going to go away. They're going to be signed off on a form request of how we want them to be delivered in the future, whether it's going to be emailed or hard copy like we already have. I guess my question is, if we can do that with the monthly reports, why can't we do it with our council books?
Well, Mr. Perkins, it's not on the agenda, but it's not really relevant. I can only answer your question for you. We haven't decided to do away with forwarding these agendas over to where they're currently delivered. The department reports are on file and are downloaded, and some of them are included here, and they can be emailed to you. The actual booklet, though, per, I believe, its ordinance has to be delivered. We did move from police officer to constable a couple of years ago. Look, I'd love to be able just to email you a copy of the agenda, but we're not there yet. Although the software programming we have could do it, but we're not quite there yet. I mean, we don't have, we'd have to change the admin ordinance as well, and some people like their book. Any other discussion? I just want to commend Chief Harold, there he is, and Chief Baker, and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, on their hard work today related to our visit by the bear, and can't make it up. I'm tired of it. 12 years as mayor, I've seen it all. But they really did a phenomenal job and got our friend sent to a better place to home freely. Also, Antonio's crew was involved as well, so I just want to thank them. Nice job. Pretty exciting morning. I don't need to laugh, I'm not laughing. I'm going to stop there, so thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll draw your minds and accept this department report. So, in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll extend all committees and entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Webless, seconded by Mr. Nero. All in favor of adjournment? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adjourn.